Why could we not then run a bus?
All in due time.
Or start a program within that stool, once you find a concentration of students. One of the responses would be, then maybe that should be a cluster site.
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
I know that Orange County is doing this and has done this for some time, and I have, I am familiar with that, and it is working out exceptionally well. You might want to do a phone call to Orange County. We all need to be networking with other districts to make sure that, that we know what other districts are doing and finding best practice and not recreate the wheel every time if someone else has already done this. But here's what I see in this. I see this as setting expectation. I came from poverty. I came from a parent household where no one graduated from high school. There were, my, both my parents grew up in the depression, and they were oldest children in families, large families, that had to help support a family and were told to quit school and get a job. But it was never a question if I was going to college, it was where. And my mother and my father set that expectation. It was not that I might go to college, it was, college to me was like going to high school. If we set that expectation for these children and we work with these families as we are so eager and to engage, and we say, "Look at this little, little baby in second grade and what opportunities he or she might have in their future," we are setting a higher expectation, aren't we? And what we're doing is we're working to make sure that that young child goes forward and excels. And yes, we have issues with busing because we don't get but about 60% of the money we need for busing currently, and there's talk of moving the parameters from two miles down to one and a half miles, which really frightens me. But, in the legislature. But basically, what we have here is an opportunity to have more of those programs in schools and to have children achieving and going on for dual enrollment, or Pine View, or ACE, or IB, and having that, you know, that little, that little dream in their hearts, making them successful in life. So I think this is really a great, great program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So what do we need to do to institutionalize this so that it's just part of what we do as a school district?
This was the pilot year, just for Title I schools, the 1,127. We would love to see this universal screening actually be universal and be at every school in Sarasota County. And Pine View would love to help support that as well. But that, we would need to scale that up. And after the April 27th date, we'll, we'll have the final data on who were identified. But I think coming back and giving an additional update report then, I think would be a great next step.
Absolutely.
And working with Sonia Figueroa-Alberts and Dr. Kingsley, and coming back to you would be absolutely wonderful.
And we may want to do mentoring with some of these students and families. Because I think this would be a real, a really great opportunity for us.
Absolutely. And I think, to answer your question as well, you know, this is 249 students that are identified at just the second grade level, that would not have been identified if we hadn't undertaken this process. And so I think about how that contributes to the culture and climate of the classrooms and the schools, where we can celebrate that we have identified something special in children that may not have been identified. So I think that is an amazing next step that's happening, I'm sure, now as this information is being shared. You know, I remember working with teachers when they were excited when kids qualified for, for our gifted programs, but, or even qualified to go on to the next level of screening. So that's, I think, a very important present step where we're at right now, celebrating these 249 students in our schools. And then, asking ourselves the question, which Dr. Kovard and I, and Dr. Kingsley, we've talked about, how can we utilize the nagglary results that we have now to continue to challenge the 249 students, even if they don't all qualify for gifted programs? And there are some implications with this, with the Rising Educators Program.
So my other question for you is, these second graders are very fortunate that they were in the pilot year, but we have third, fourth, and fifth graders. There's probably 250 third graders out there that didn't have the benefit of this and didn't get identified. What can we do to identify those students who are throughout our system? You know, I made the mistake here of making a note to check ACE, IB, and AP next year, knowing full well, we're good seven or eight years before we'll impact that data with this group. So how do we identify those students who didn't have the benefit of universal screening when they were in second grade?
I mean, to answer the question, part of it is funding. We discussed this before, that it does take resources, but it also takes the teachers. I mean, I had, I was fortunate enough to ask a few questions on the elementary teachers, specifically La Marco, where I was at, and some of the kids identified, teachers would have never picked out of a hat. And so part of that is, some of the test scores that we see now, and making sure that we're communicating with parents to bring it also to our attention when you see something special in your child, kind of like Ed James did. I mean, that's, unfortunately, that's been our process all along, when you think of elementary and when someone comes up through it, through the process. But unless we look at funding right now, and it will go back on, at least schools, at least within this time, until we look again, maybe the following year, and when we get all our data together, to see based on the funding that was put forth right now, was it beneficial? Did we get everything out of it that we thought we would get before we would come to you and even ask for that next step?
And this was one, this was just one slice. But, you know, a journey of a thousand miles begins with one step, and I think it's an important right step. We, I reached out to Mr. James and asked him about his experience at Pine View and with gifted education, and what were some of the barriers? And how did he overcome some of them? And how did some of his friends who were at Pine View but left? What caused that? So I've been looking at this, at Pine View specifically, for about five years now, and planning and strategizing how we can address some of those barriers, whether it be transportation, support networks, once the students are there, how do we make sure they're supported all the way through? Some have, some of the issues are sports related. They want to be able to make sure they participate. And I think there's some things we could do there. Support for teachers and training, lots of training we can do. But I am beyond excited that we've begun this process. And the, Dr. Clayton's comment about the discussion we had with Dr. Kingsley, in a previous district where I worked, the Rising Scholars Program was, was the next step. Once we universally screened students, we found some who were obviously identified gifted, but there were many, many students who are right at the edge. And we wanted to come up with something to meet their needs. And so we began a Rising Scholars Program. And she's probably not watching or listening, but Dr. Allison Shepherd in Williamsburg, James City County, is one of those, you know, outside network opportunities where we could get advice and input on how we could begin those support networks at some of these Title I schools. And if you look at the broken disaggregated data, break it down, there are schools, Gocio and Tuttle, for example, that have incredibly high numbers of Hispanic students that were identified. And when I talk to some of the principals, just like what Mr. Johnson mentioned, the students, they, they know them, they're their students, and, "Oh, person, you know, A or B, I didn't know, I didn't know they would be on the list. Wow, that's really neat."
That's the first step.
So how are we going to help them now that, now that that light bulb has come on? How are we going to support that learning as we move forward?
Good stuff.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shirley Brown.
I too have been in discussions with Mr. James and have been looking at trying to set him up as a mentor. But thinking about that, you know, every student in the ACE program, in the Pine View program, in the IB program, they all probably are looking at getting those Bright Futures scholarships, and they need, or anyone wanting a scholarship will probably need volunteer hours. And I would think, who better to mentor an elementary or middle school child than a high school student who's in a gifted program?
Great idea.
So we might look at that. And you said one thing that I didn't get an answer from, the cost involved. I mean, we identified 22% of the kids that we, we looked at. What is the cost? I mean, I guess, there, I know there's a cost involved in not identifying these kids. And let's weigh that against what it is to run it.
The opportunity to identify a student and change their lives, their life and the lives of those around them, to me, is immeasurable. But the actual program, the dollar amount, Ms. Brown, is $12,000, is what Pine View invested for this program this year.
$12,000 for all of these?
$12,000 for this 1,127 students to be assessed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, I have to follow up on that because the price tag's a little astonishing for once on the low side. Typically, when things come here, I remarket all the commas in it. And so, the way the process worked, you did the initial screening, and then our existing staff in Student Services. And so, the ability to do universal screening with second graders, would it, certainly, I don't think there'd be a financial limitation. Is there a limitation within Student Services? You sent them 250, 249 referrals to do the follow-up screenings. One can assume if you did universal screening at all of our elementary schools, that number would double or triple. Is there an issue that would have to be addressed there in their capacity? Could they receive in 750 referrals if that were the case?
So I looked around to see if Sonia Figueroa-Alberts was here, and she is not that I can see. But I can say, yes, I would imagine that there would be some additional supports that would be, our school psychologists would need. They are the primary ones who are doing the actual assessments. And these are intensive assessments, they're one-on-one assessments, there are other responsibilities that our school psychologists have as well. So I'm sure there's a more detailed answer that Sonia could provide, and I'll definitely make sure that I discuss this.
No, the question is, are we doing this next year? What would stop us from doing this next year?
Well.
We're in.
Pine View has pressed a commitment to that, but to scale up is what I'm thinking, was what the question was, I understood, to scale up in terms of doing this beyond second grade, is there an additional investment?
Sure. Tripling the $12,000 is the issue, is can we handle the referral? Or is there another cost that we need to consider to?
And there would be, I would imagine.
Correct, because we have deadlines, correct, that we have to meet.
And Tim Geisel is our district's lead school psychologist. And I know he spent many hours planning and strategizing how to make sure all 249 students could, could be evaluated. Scaling that up, I think we would just want to engage him and that department, but anything's possible.
What's a, what does a private assessment cost?
I don't have a dollar amount for that.
It costs anywhere between $450 to $1,000.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Brandon, thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have one more committee.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll call up Catherine Kokosa and BJ Ivy. They are representing our Rising Educators Committee, which I'm very excited about the opportunities with this committee.
Morning.
You're getting around a little bit better.
Yes.
But not back where you were.
Welcome. Good to see you.
It's good to see you all. Good morning. We will keep this brief, and I will start by saying the program's already in place for next year. We're done. No, we do have a few details to share with you. If you can go ahead and put the PowerPoint up for us. We have been tasked with putting together a Rising Educators Program. When I first started on the, at the, in the summer, Steve approached me about looking at teaching academies. And then when Dawn started, she approached me about attaching it to our gap plan. So we're kind of working on two programs in one. And one of our main focuses for this year is to get the program, the teaching academy programs, up off the ground and running. So if you don't hear a lot about the minority piece, just know that we're growing. We had to get some frameworks in place so we could have a foundation to build on. So, if you can go to the next slide, our item, our gap item, is to develop and implement a program for future minority educators in our high schools. Our short-term goals are to increase awareness about the teaching profession for our students and to also provide access to our, to post-secondary programs for our students. Our long-term goal is to bring these kids back into our schools to be educators in our system. So we have established a pathway. We've got three, three pieces to our plan. We've got the pathway piece, the partnership piece, and the students piece. I'll be talking about the first two, and BJ Ivy will be joining us to talk about the third, the students. So our pathway, we have been working very closely with people, our, excuse me, with Penny Readinger and Trip Jennings and CTE to develop this pathway. Because what we realized early on is if we didn't set this pathway up for success initially, we'd run into a lot of pitfalls. So the collaboration between these three groups has been essential. But what we are looking at is a course progression for grade nine, grade 10, and grade 11 using CTE courses. There is actually a CTE sequence that the students can participate in. And if we do it right, which we're hoping to do, the kids will actually earn industry certification. We worked with Trip to kind of set up what we could add, and we're going to be adding the MOS industry certification. Each grade, grade nine, when the students take, entered the teaching profession, we will tie the Word certification to that. Grade 10, we will be tying PowerPoint to Growth and Development. And grade 11 will be the Foundations of Curriculum course, and we'll tie Excel. At the end of it, the students will be eligible to take their industry certification test and hopefully receive that certification. If a student comes to us with, like, their digital information or technology piece already done, Trip has ensured, he has assured us that the students can take the advanced coursework and still get an industry certification. So we're kind of making sure that we're meeting the needs of all students. Then in grade 12, we're going to work to have two semester courses put in place with universities. I'll talk a little bit more about that in, in the next slide. But the kids, we've identified two courses. One is a prerequisite to get into College of Education programs in Florida, and then the other one counts as an elective, but is also an education course. So it's just increasing their knowledge about. So what this is providing our students, that industry certification piece is huge, because what it's going to ultimately do is help our students earn their Bright Futures Scholarship and the Merit Scholarship piece. So we're potentially providing funding for students to go off to college with. Now, that means they have to be eligible in all their other areas in order to meet that requirement. But that was a huge goal of ours, to make sure that we weren't just providing an opportunity, but we were providing access. In addition to that, they will be, if they follow this pathway in its fullest, they will be leaving our school with two credit, or two courses, DE credits for their post-secondary coursework. So our partnerships, we have been able to partner with USF, SCF, and then most recently, the Branson Foundation. USF, this is really exciting for us, because up until this year, they have not allowed us in our articulation agreement to offer courses on our campuses. And this year, they're allowing us to offer the two DE courses on our campuses. They're not expanding out yet, this is just the introductory for them. But we were pretty excited that they, they actually approached us about this idea. And then SCF, our longstanding partner, will be allowing us to offer to, the two DE courses as well. And then most recently, the Branson Foundation has committed to provide us with some funding to support the implementation on our campuses. BJ will talk a little bit more about it, but it's a huge partnership for us, because it's going to provide us with some incentives for teachers to stay involved and invested. So, the schools. You want to move on to the next slide? At each of our schools, well, we initially started off requesting just a couple of schools to do a pilot with. All of our schools jumped on board. So we were really excited about that, but we also were kind of going, "Whoa, we need to figure out what this looks like, because it's, it's a new program." So if you take a look at your PowerPoint, it gives you an idea of the schools. At Booker High School, we're this year going to be offering the first course in the CTE sequence. There'll be a focus on enrolling ninth grade students into that course. And they already have identified a teacher, Tymisha Williams, and if you know her, she is amazing, she's a perfect fit for this. And then they will be offering a club, and BJ will talk about the club. Sarasota High School will be doing DE with SCF, and they have identified a teacher, Tiffany Cantrell. Tiffany is actually a DIT teacher now, so she's coming from the CTE pathway, so that's an interesting connection. And another, just a note as we go through these teachers, when we talk to the schools about selecting a teacher, we emphasize the importance of selecting the right teacher. This program will be made by that teacher who's connecting with those kids. At Riverview High School, they have partnered with USF for the DE program, and they have an amazing teacher, here anyways. His name's BJ Ivy. I don't know if any of you know him. But they will also be offering a club. Venice High School will be doing both DE courses with SCF, focusing on their 11th and 12th grade students, and then also having CTE courses, the first course, Intro to Teaching, at grade nine. They're kind of attacking it from both sides. They've got Mary Dembinski, she's a math teacher, vibrant personality, high energy, she'll be a great fit. Northport High School is going to be starting with their CTE course, one, Intro to Teaching. They are phasing out the Early Education Program. And they're actually one of the schools that kind of initially said, "Hey, we need to look at this education program. Our teachers, the, our, sorry, our students really want to be educators, but the closest we have to it is Early Education. So what can we do about it?" So what they are actually doing is phasing out their Early Education Program and bringing in the, just the education pathway. What, why they don't have a teacher selected is because their current elementary, or Early Education teacher is retiring. So they're kind of, it's TBD until they find a replacement for that teacher. So you can see we have a wide variety of teachers on there. We're really excited about them. And that brings us to kind of the students. And BJ is here to talk about the students, because that's the crucial part, and BJ is amazing.
I'd like to start out with, when I was named County Teacher of the Year, the state of Florida, the DOE, put together just an unbelievable event for all the county teachers of the year, which I was able to attend. There, I heard a speech that kind of had a major impact on me. A young lady gets up and she proceeds to, you know, talk to over 40 educators, come to find out she's a junior in high school. She gets done with her speech on why she's going to become a teacher, and I don't believe there was a dry eye in the room. You know, everybody in education knows that it's more of a calling than a choice. You know, you just have that passion and something that you really want to do. Come to find out, this lady was the state president of the FFEA. You know, in my ignorance, I'm asking the person next to me, "What's FFEA? What is this? Like, how do we, what is going on?" And the person next to me didn't know either, so I started to research it a little bit more. So I sought out the, the young lady, got to know her, got to know, you know, her sponsor who was there, and realized real quick that this is something that we needed at Riverview High School in Sarasota County. The state also gave us a large, some numbers, some stats, some data that kind of was alarming to me. I'm going to share a few of them with you now. If you look 10 years ago, from 2006 to 2016, all state universities have seen students graduating with a degree in education drop by 5,000. If you look just three years ago to 2014 compared to 2017, UCF has 318 fewer interns than they had in 2014. If you look at FAU, for example, FAU gave Palm Beach County 40 brand-new teachers. That county started the school year with over 100 teaching, teacher positions left vacant. So what does that mean? Well, it means you hire somebody who's not qualified, you hire a long-term sub, and that means that there's 100 classrooms that don't have a qualified teacher. Those kids are obviously negatively impacted. If you look at our own county, I think we started this year, and I could be, you know, wrong, but when I looked it up on the county website, there was 46 job openings when we started the school year. You know, I'm a Sarasota County alumni, went through Gulf Gate, Sarasota Mill, Riverview High School, and I knew that this was something that I wanted to come back and do. However, you know, there's a lot of reasons why kids maybe are not choosing that, you know, which I kind of believe that, how can I, can, what can I can control? You know, there's a lot of things outside of my realm of control, but what can I control? Well, I started looking at it, well, one thing I can control is having FFEA on Riverview High School's campus. There's 39 high schools with FFEA across our state of Florida. There was not one chapter in Sarasota, Manatee, or Charlotte County. So if you look at Southwest Florida, it was vacant. I decided that was going to be my mission.
What is FFEA?
FFEA is the Future Florida Educators of America. Right? And it's an organization that we decided, hey, we have to get it started. So I came back, I met with Dr. Burns, who was our principal at the time, kind of created an action plan, ran it by him. He was more than happy to do it. You know, I feel like that this is something that, when I set my goal of, hey, we're going to have an FFEA, we're going to get these kids recruited, and they're going to go to the state conference. Right? That was my personal goal. Now I feel like with the work of these, you know, lovely ladies up here, that we're going to expand that goal and say that every high school in Sarasota County is going to have an FFEA, and every Sarasota County school, you know, high school is going to take their kids to this conference. You know, we were fortunate enough that we were able to send three of our 10 members to the conference, and they came back like on fire. Like, if you thought they had passion before, after this conference, all it was is, you know, fanning the flames. You know, what we have to do is identify the students that have this passion, have this fire burning, and we got to use FFEA along with this pathway to continue to fan those flames. So when that kid walks out, there's no question what they're going into, they're going to knock out that degree and come back here and teach. Because obviously, the need is very, very critical.
I'm going to add one piece, the Branson Foundation, which we mentioned, that partnership, what, one of the pieces of the grant that they've given us is funding for the teachers who will sponsor the FFEA for the first five years. And then in addition to that, they'll also be helping provide travel funding for students and teachers to attend the conference for the first five years. So we were excited, we kind of thought forward and said, "What could we ask them for?" And this was one of those areas where we knew it would be important.
If there was one more thing I'd like to add, just kind of build into, you know, breaking down the diversity or building up diversity, I feel like the biggest demographic of students that we kind of let slide through the cracks as far as becoming educators are student athletes. So I think if we really attack the student athletes about potentially joining this club and getting involved, you know, then all of a sudden, you know, I think we're going to see an increase in minority teachers that come back to Sarasota County. Another piece that I feel like is vital to FFEA, something that we have done at Riverview High School, is we've partnered FFEA along with Phillippe Shores. So our kids, you know, in that, you know, club, every, you know, once a week go over to Phillippe Shores, they now have a kindergartner who they read to. Then we're actually have built in a partnership with USF, with one of their clubs on campus, and we're actually trying to get, you know, the USF, you know, teachers to come in and work with the high school students on how to really teach these kids. You know, and instead of just going in and, "Okay, I'm your mentor, we hang out," actually started intimate, like, you know, implement some educational practices that can improve their teaching skills, but also improve what these kids are getting out of that mentorship as well.
This is all about the power of collaboration.
Well, I really like it, and I think we need to be doing this, because we need to promote the profession. You know, when I grew up, I played school, and I was a teacher. And when other people played dolls, I played school. I was a student for a while, and then I got older and I was the teacher. But I, I thought it was just great, and of course, I've always considered myself a teacher, whether I was, you know, working as a teacher or out of the, out of the profession, I've always felt that way, but, and it is a calling. But I think we're not doing ourselves any service, and I can remember, you know, you had an Audubon Bird Society Club, and you had Future Teachers Club, and, and I think it's great to get back to, to some of those things, because we really need to promote our profession, and it's very, very important to our kids. Shirley?
You know, I'm, I'm just getting blown away by some of the things we're doing. I mean, you know, two weeks ago, we heard about that partnership with the Florida State University for training people in the medical professions, and now we're, we just keep finding ways to solve our own problems, and I think that's a really good thing. You mentioned that you're having some of these student athletes or some of these FFEA members going and reading to kindergarteners. Can tell you one thing they can do instead of reading to the kindergarteners is have the kindergarteners read to them. Kindergarteners can read and are expected to read now. Not the beginning of the year, but by this time of the year, they should have those kids reading to them, and that's how they'll help. I don't know if, you know that kindergarteners can read.
Eric?
Unfortunately, I'm not able to attend those right now due to basketball, so when I say reading to them, I really am ignorant as far as what actually takes place.
Engage.
I just more like, you know, set it up for them.
Can I follow?
That's why I think it's so important that you've got the folks from USF coming in and doing a little bit of methods with them. They'll hit on kind of what the capacity of the kids are and how to develop it.
Those USF students, they come with their teacher from USF, so this is learning for everybody involved.
Good.
Eric?
I do want to point out that this afternoon, we're going to be looking at, taking it up a notch, we had Florida State in the afternoon, we're going to even excel beyond that, and we're going to talk in agreement with the premier institution of the University of Florida. So we're climbing and we're improving, preempt it, we're improving on ourselves, and so I just wanted to point that out. But I just wanted to thank Dr. Clayton for heading this project up. I know this is taking up a lot of your bandwidth, but, but it does, it does matter, and so thank you. But talking about calling, I've had a chance to go to Riverview, whether it's the winter break, summer break, and you know who's there? BJ's there. I mean, he was there on the winter break when everybody else was during Christmas, he's there, sitting in a chair with his leg propped up, not, not sitting at home trying to heal, heal, but he's there with the kids during the winter break, and he's there during the summer, and he's there during the school year. And he's there, you know, at night and traveling with the team. So I know you probably get this a lot, but it's never enough. So thank you very much. I mean, your calling is having an effect and it's probably ruining your home life, your personal life. But we're, the kids of our community and our schools is getting the benefit from it. So BJ, thank you.
For all you do for our kids.
Caroline?
That's what I wanted to say. I wanted to thank you because I know that you all are going above and beyond. And these committees that you all put together are fantastic. That's what's going to drive our district to be even better than we are now. And it wouldn't be happening without you all stepping forward and taking on this leadership role. So thank you very much.
Dr. Bowden?
So walking around your high school campuses, if you just made a call for who wants to be a teacher, you've got these kids that Jane described who've wanted to be teachers since they were in kindergarten. My daughter would be one of them. But you also have these group of kids that would make great teachers, but have never considered it as a career. How do we reach those? It's one thing to nurture those who've wanted to be teachers since they could walk, but how do you find that kid? And I know you've told stories about your basketball players and literally pulling them aside and go, you're really good with kids. Have you thought about becoming a teacher? Or did I just answer my own question?
Well, I would say, I think it's twofold. I think the first thing that we have to do as educators is we can't let anything negative about education come out of our mouths. I think too much, we have teachers who are kind of self-bashing and we say, oh, this is wrong, and this is wrong, and we should do this, and we should do that. And if you're a kid on the outside looking in, you're like, well, you don't even speak good about what you do. Why do I want to jump in that? You know, maybe I shouldn't say that politically, but I feel that's the truth. I think the second thing that we have to do is, you know, one thing that we did at Riverview and it worked, we saw enrollment go from three to 10, which, you know, 10's not a huge number, but it's our first year. And when it goes from three to 10, it is, you know, it's a big increase, is we made a video. And we got the quote-unquote "popular" teachers, the kids that all, you know, they can all, the teachers that all the kids can relate to, that they all like. And we just made a funny video. It was half funny, half sentimental. Half of it was, hey, we're going to give you, give me a reason why you teach. And so he gave us our series, like our why, like what's behind our passion. The other half of it was funny. You know, mine was, well, I just teach so I can get to practice by 2:30. You know, if I had a real job, I couldn't do that. You know, and everybody knows I'm joking. But it was a funny video, but at the same time, you're planting seeds. And, you know, you don't know which kid is going to look up at Mr., you know, Coach Means and go, you know what, I like Means. I can see myself doing that. And, you know, and that, and it's a lot of sidebar conversations. You know, I think you have to have teachers with the mindset of, I need to try to recruit kids. You know, and if you are starting to, you know, if I know if I was a college coach, I would have, okay, this is what I want to do. This is the kind of kid I want to recruit to my program. I think as educators, we got to understand, this is the type of people we want to recruit into our profession, and then be on the lookout for those. And when you see those, you have to start planting the seed, and, you know, and sometimes you just plant a seed and let it grow later, you know?
We need to do that on our educational channel.
Yes, we do. So Riverview High School has a model executive internship program. I know you can interview in internship with CPAs and insurance agents and lots of different things. Can you do an executive internship with a elementary or middle school teacher at Riverview High School?
I cannot speak to elementary or middle school. I know I've had them at the high school level. Yes.
So, and I should point out that those CTE courses, that pathway, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, it's not an executive internship, but with each one of those courses, the students are required to intern with different teachers. So we're working, our next step, especially in that third course, will be to establish the connections between some of our schools that are in close proximity to one another so the students can get off their own campus and see.
Any questions? This was wonderful. Thank you all for all your work. And this is, this is a wonderful thing.
Thank you. I just have to, again, thank all of our presenters today. What a great note to end this on with this committee. And thank you to this board for your interest and your compassion and your involvement with all of our children. It's well received and appreciated. And I have a lot of takeaways and a lot of feedback that I'll get back to you.
Dr. Clayton?
Yes.
How's the job going?
I'm enjoying it. Thank you for asking me that. I am really enjoying this. It is definitely aligned to my life's vision and passion, which is to see all of our children excel and exceed. So it's just a pleasure to collaborate with people from so many diverse backgrounds and walks within this district. So I love Sarasota County, and I love this job. And more than anything, I love our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I love you too.
Thank you.
Okay, it's now 10:30. So we're just off about, what, half an hour? So you've got two seconds.
Ready, go.
Now we have brought to us at great expense by Chris Renoff and Karen Rose. Where's Karen Rose?
Karen Rose is attending to some
She's not sick.
More important issues
She's not sick.
Over at school.
She's not sick.
She is not sick.
Okay, good. iReady AP2 Diagnostic Data for Elementary and Middle Schools.
So hello again, everybody. For the next item on the agenda, providing an iReady update from Elementary and Middle Diagnostic 2. We have Kelly Ellington, Director of Curriculum at the elementary level. She's going to be driving the presentation. So I encourage you to either look on the screen or on the paper copy provided to you. We have Amy Beechey. Amy Beechey is an Instructional Program Specialist. And for those of you who do not know or have not met Amy, Michelle Close obviously has taken a job as Assistant Principal at Woodland. Amy has, was the Science Specialist. She is now in the Instructional Specialist. And we use that very general because she is a specialist when it comes to instruction. So glad to have Amy as part of the elementary team.
And she has a beautiful orange jacket on.
Thank you. And Sue Meckler, she is the Director of Curriculum for Middle Schools. So today, in the essence of time, our focus is going to be very, very brief, but I want to share three things. First, if you look at the slide, the first line, share some key takeaways from AP2 Diagnostic, spotlight some, a few examples of how school leaders and teachers are using the data. And finally, we'll close with reviewing, well, where do we go from here? So if you take a good look at slide number two, the big answer is, when we compare last year's AP2 data to AP2 data from this year, we see very similar performance. You may say, okay, that's fine. We see very similar performance. But there's one very important point to highlight. And if you look at the calendar that's enclosed, students achieve the same level of performance four to five weeks earlier with four to five fewer weeks of instruction. This year's students began the second diagnostic on December 4th. That's four weeks earlier than they gave the diagnostic last year, and they performed at the same level. What that does is basically, in addition to the positive growth, the adjusted timeline allows us to provide data immediately upon returning from winter break to our teachers, giving them time for intensive intervention, looking at that data, and figuring out, how do we strategically support the students that need additional help? So that's four to five extra weeks of instruction, utilizing the data, the power of the tool and its resources to meet student needs. In addition, just a couple of other takeaways, we have seen accelerated growth from students, especially those that are not on grade level. We would have graphs, but in the essence of time, we just wanted to share with you. I mean, it is significant as far as the amount of growth. Students one to two grade level below level are performing and making up ground from Diagnostic 1 to Diagnostic 2 this year compared to last. And last but not least, more students and schools are growing at or above the national average when compared to last year's reading and math performance. One thing that we do want to pay close attention to and continue to monitor is to make sure that we're challenging and extending learning opportunities for our on-level students. We want to make sure that we're engaging those students in conversation around the data, helping them make sure that they own the data. Because when those conversations and that buy-in and ownership takes place, that's when we see scores start to rise. And with that, Amy Beechey, who is our Program Specialist and works out in the schools with the teachers and the administrators, who couldn't be here, but we brought a few with us today that you're going to hear from, she can speak specifically to those strategies.
Our goal for iReady this year is not only to work with intentionality in addressing students' needs, but it's to know and understand the impact teacher actions have on student achievement. With this focus, the teachers have been provided a tool to utilize a problem-solving approach to improve student achievement, which truly exemplifies the true power that we harness in iReady. At the heart of iReady, the data provides the actionable link to identify a problem, then begin the process to explore possible causes, develop a theory of action, design a plan, and implement the strategy while assessing the progress along the way. We have asked Lisa Wheatley, Principal of Lakeview Elementary, to share a story with you which demonstrates the power of utilizing iReady as a tool to launch the problem-solving cycle and a means to impact student achievement.
Two data came out. And my third-grade teachers were looking at the data and really concerned about a group of students who were not doing as well as we had hoped. And the third-grade teachers during their CPT time started brainstorming on how we could give these students something extra. And they started thinking about a time when they used to do a boot camp, and a teacher would run that boot camp. And then they thought of a particular teacher who is taught fifth grade last year, is now teaching second grade. And they said, we think this second-grade teacher could really help if she came and we homogeneously grouped these students and she helped the teacher who was in there during the afternoon block. So I talked to the second-grade teacher to find out, would you be willing to do this? And what is going on in your afternoon? And she said, well, I'm teaching math in the afternoon. To which she discussed this with her team. Three members of her second-grade team said, we'll take your math students. We want you to go help third grade. So she agreed to help these third-grade students. So now every afternoon, she is in with another teacher, with our lowest students who are performing on iReady and other classroom assessments, but really differentiating instruction and really looking at the standards and teaching to the standards and making sure these students are making growth. I just think it's a great example of how our teachers want to help all our students. It's really amazing to see teachers pulling together to help all the students and not just the students in my classroom. So I love that about Lakeview.
So Lisa's story began with a team of teachers analyzing the diagnostic data. The graph you see represents the breakdown of Lakeview students from the first diagnostic. You'll notice about 53% of the population was noted as on or above level, shown in the green tier of the graphic, with 40% being placed in Tier 2 and 7% in Tier 3. As they started to review the Diagnostic 2 data, you notice there were some great shifts in the graphic. The green Tier 1 group increased by 24%, while the red Tier 3 group decreased by 3%. Data, at its best, allows us to be result-driven, meaning we have, we can better determine how to allocate resources and improve instruction. This begins with examining the data and asking questions. The team Lisa described focused their questions on the students in that upper tier of the graphic, in the red tier. They now have the strategy in place, and we're really looking forward to noting their impact as Diagnostic 3 is implemented. Next, we're going to take, next, we're going to hear from a fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Ivy. I recognize the last name there. Who is going to discuss how she's utilizing goal-setting with her students as a mean to measure impact.
I also use iReady for goal-setting with my students. At the beginning of the year, when we get our beginning-of-the-year scores, I take my class average and I put that up in our classroom. And then the students are all given an index card with their beginning-of-the-year score on it, and they're able to then do a self-reflection and see how they compare. If they are above the average, then they're shooting for 500. We call it 500-point club in my room because our end-of-the-year goal for them is the sixth-grade level, which is 527. Children who are not quite at that average, then the average becomes their goal. And I tell them, it's, we're not building a house in a day. It's a brick by brick. We're going to get you there. So for right now, we're going to start small with that first brick. And your first brick is to get you up to the average. And then every month, when students get their growth check, their scores get updated on their index cards. They get their index cards back. We do another self-reflection. Did we make growth? How much growth? Did we drop? Why do we think we dropped? What can we do next time to make sure that we continue to move forward to reach that
So Mrs. Ivy has helped her students set expectations for their work while providing an opportunity for the students to reflect on their progress. When a teacher is able to effectively engage students in tracking their progress towards a goal, student achievement has been shown to increase, as we can see by Mrs. Ivy's diagnostic data from Diagnostic 1 to Diagnostic 2. Thank you.
So to move to looking at this a bit more closely, many of our middle school teachers have data chats with their students on a regular basis, some more frequently than others, depending on the needs of the student. iReady provides for our teachers and our students the tools necessary for them to monitor their successes and set goals that they need for improvement. It also helps to stretch our highest achievers to move even further. This sheet also is a plan to support achieving those goals and is monitored by the students and teachers. Here's a closer look at how one of our middle school teachers, Ms. Andrews, a language arts teacher at Brookside Middle, uses this with her students on a regular basis. You can see that she puts sentence stems in for those students to help them with their verbiage in explaining what their strengths are, areas that they need to improve, and helps them to set goals. In addition, this teacher makes sure that this information is communicated with their family members. Students take this home, share their charts with their family members, get signatures from them, and how the family is going to support them in achieving those goals. So we want to now listen to Ms. Andrews and how she feels iReady is impacting teaching and learning for her students.
I think it's impacting teaching and learning. One, for my teaching, I have real solid data to use with my students that is individualized so I can actually differentiate my instruction that I have, I can keep an eye on, keep an eye on how they're progressing. And for students learning, like in the small groups, I'm able to look at a specific area. And regardless of what grade level they're on, I have resources, which is the first time really that I've ever had as a sixth-grade language arts teacher. Most of my materials, unless I went out and sought them, purchased them, it's one-stop shopping as far as the standards go and the material that I have for that student.
So in listening to this teacher talk about the impact it's making, I want to remind you that iReady has several components to it. The diagnostic assessment is one piece that really helps us to see our individual students' strengths and areas of need. It also provides an individualized pathway with computer-assisted instruction for those students to help close gaps. But in addition to that, our teachers are all provided with a toolbox. And that toolbox has a plethora of resources in it that gives the teachers the guidelines on what lessons they can pull to help individual or small groups of students be successful and close those gaps and/or stretch students to go beyond where their current level is. Finally, the standards mastery piece that iReady provides gives teachers on grade level standards-based assessments. So we'd like you to hear from Jessica Fucy, one of our Assistant Principals at Brookside Middle, on how her teachers are using standards mastery.
We've really enjoyed the standard mastery assessments. They feel as though the rigor that they have, they're able to match questions to the FSA. They feel that their students are getting the rigor in the right places, and they're consistently being challenged. Teachers have recently started implementing those standard mastery assessments more frequently in their classrooms. And as we prepare for the FSA, and they're delighted by the results that they get, and they can target individual students.
So our teachers are learning how to use those standards mastery assessments appropriately with their students, targeting those areas of need. But again, we have intensive language arts teachers who, for the first time, are really giving students on-grade level challenges. Before, our teachers were teaching below grade level, and now we have them stretching those students, and they are rising to the occasion. We are very pleased at the middle school level with our progress towards annual learning targets. After one-half year of instruction, on average, 86% of our students in reading and 84% in math have made one year's growth in learning. In closing, we just want to reiterate the power of iReady in truly having data-driven instruction. We have all the confidence in the world that our administrators, teachers, and students are making the best instructional decisions possible, using this data to close gaps and move the needle. Thank you very much.
How long has iReady been on the market? How long has it been sold in schools? Anybody know?
Ten years.
Ten years?
2010.
2010. The 10. Getting close. I just was curious because I know that we changed the way we're using it, implementing it in middle school. I had great concerns last year because, you know, we're kind of using it willy-nilly at Pine View, for example, with, you know, a child should, and gifted should use this 45 minutes a week at home, but not with a lot of direction. And that's scary, pretty scary to me. So we think we're going to see higher scores, I guess, on the FSA this year.
I mean, that's exactly what we're after. That's exactly, when you're using the...
We spent a lot of money on this and...
Absolutely.
Should be giving us, you know, formative as well as... I just hope that we do have that this year.
And I think you're absolutely right when you're asking for that. And, you know, we want to see, we know it correlates at a very, very high level. I think the intentionality, the strategic use, the better understanding of the tool, ownership from children, honestly, those are the components that really make this tool as powerful as it can be. So yes, we're hopeful, but we expect to see higher results.
Shirley.
I know whenever we bring something new into the schools, not all the teachers embrace it at first, and some of them come along grudgingly. What percentage of the teachers that should be using this are using it? Do you have any idea?
Well, you know, if we look across the elementary level, I'm just going to say every teacher is expected to use it. And again, it's not like the old success maker tool that we used to have in the past. It's not the more that you're on it, the more that you get from it. It's about strategic use. We want to make sure that those minutes, 45 minutes a week in reading and in math, are being utilized, but then it's the resources. So every teacher is expected to be utilizing this tool. They're just utilizing it very differently, and they're given autonomy by their principals through data chats, et cetera, to utilize those tools to target the students' needs as necessary.
So that would be one of the things that the principal would be using in their evaluation. Are they using iReady effectively?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Eric?
I think it's very exciting that you're five weeks ahead. So when you equate back from the fact that we start early and there was Christmas break, how far ahead are they when you take that into account?
We're at the end of the year.
No, I'm just saying, if you, obviously, you started early, so you've got to take that into account. And then the other one, there was a Christmas break in between the two. So when you account for the Christmas break and the early start, how far ahead are you?
And that's exactly why we asked... Go ahead. Do you want to...
I'm pretty sure, based on my explanation with Dina, and Dina can back me up if I'm correct on this, that was taken into account, the calendar adjustment.
So December 1st and January 5th?
What you're seeing on the stars is actually the date of implementation for the diagnostic and the date that the results were given out this year. But last year, those results were not provided to the district until late February, early March.
Oh, so you're not actually showing the days. And so I was very excited to hear you guys say that it's so much better than last year.
So that data is reflecting a five-week...
And was that data that shows that we're doing so much better than last year?
We can certainly provide that to you. We just knew that in 10 minutes, we didn't have a whole lot of time.
And so what's the predictive score right now? End of the day, bottom line? What are you predicting?
So all of the data is on the district dashboard, again.
So you're the smart people. You can tell me. So what's the predictive data? How does it look? How are we doing? You're the smart guy.
Just as I said...
They don't just let people be executive directors.
Absolutely. And again, I don't have the data in front of me right now because, and in the essence of time, but I could certainly go on the dashboard and I could forward that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Happy to do it.
Well, I think it'll be interesting. I have an article from Johns Hopkins about peer review and iReady. I'm going to give it to you and would like to chat with you, not here, but sometimes about this, because I'm not sure I understand it all either. But someone had forwarded it to me, and I want to get that to you.
Forward to it.
And then I guess we have also to discuss iReady evaluation rubric, which is next.
I believe that's next on the agenda.
Thank you. Does anybody need a break?
Would you like me to get up and leave?
No, sir. I enjoy your questions.
I'm trying to break out of my stride.
You were so shy and quiet this morning, earlier today.
Yes, ma'am. Call for a plan.
So now we have Dr. Roca and Dr. Cantalupo to discuss the rubric of iReady.
Good morning again.
Thank you for being here again.
I'm sure you're getting tired, so we'll go through this quickly. I gave Mr. Robinson a meaningful look. So you asked us to come back, back before the break, you asked us to come back, yes you did, with a rubric or a template by which we could perhaps evaluate the iReady program and also perhaps use this as a future tool to evaluate the impact of other products and services that we adopt here in Sarasota County. It's quite an extensive rubric, but I think if we go through a few examples, you will appreciate the work that we have done for you today and tomorrow. As you know, evaluation is one of our favorite things to do. And with the iReady, as with many other products, some things, we did fail to document things, but we did go through some of the procedures that one would go through when they're looking or considering a product such as iReady. So for example, we did conduct a needs assessment and determined that we needed a tool like iReady here in Sarasota County. We did evaluate, using expert review, similar products, and did consider some of the attributes of this tool that we will go through for you. I'm sorry, I'm smiling because of Mr. Robinson's expressions towards me. So the iReady rubric that we're presenting to you today, we broke it out into two pieces, those activities that we conduct prior to implementation, as well as activities to evaluate objectives every year of the program, some of them different first year, some of them continuing years two and three and four, and some are totally outcome measures at the end of the program. Now, iReady is different in that it has three different components, and that's why you'll see such an extensive chart. And as you recall, it has the assessment piece where we can monitor students' progress. It has a teacher resource and teacher toolkit section of it. And then it also has the individualized student assessment, the student instruction. What's that one called?
It's different than what we already have.
Teacher-led instruction.
Okay, student-led instruction. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cantalupo.
If you go back one slide... Oh, no, we're here. Pre-implementation.
Excuse me a minute. You just handed out a second.
It's the same. I wasn't sure if you'd have it, and it gets very tiny when we look at it up here.
Okay. We already had it.
You have one.
It's not a revision, too?
No, 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 no. Okay, thank you.
Does it look like that?
This is just a very quick overview, and then I'll get into the rubric. When we looked at evaluating iReady, we thought that we would go to two places. And this is something that typically happens when we buy a product. We have this pre-implementation phase, you know, before you buy anything, can it do what we wanted it to do? And then after we implement it, this is the piece that I think you were asking about, how do we cyclically sort of evaluate the products that we're using to see if we want to continue using them? And it's a good idea. It's something that we informally have done, but something I think the board asked for, which is a great way to do business. So pre-implementation, we're looking at these big pieces. We're looking at the quality of the product and the assessment. We're looking at the teacher-led instruction, the quality of the toolkit, very important when we were looking for a product. Do we have additional resources? Then the test attributes and whether we can integrate it technically, because this is an application. We go forward, James. Then the annual would look at the technical attributes. So it's one thing to see on paper whether you could, does it say it would work with our systems? But then after a year, did it work? Test attributes, and we'll go into detail what I meant by them, but that was something Natalie and I focused on. Is it measuring what it said it would measure? Administrator and teacher experiences, if that's not happening, it's not going to be implemented. Student use and performance, how are they doing on the product, with the product? Formative assessment, which was the big part of this tool that we really needed, and we use it for multiple things beside formative assessment. And then the cost and impact. We tried to get at the nitty-gritty of that. And these are all these, what I'm calling, and Natalie and I call dimensions, and had we come up with those? There's a lot of tools out there in the research world to evaluate things, products, instructional things. Three pieces of information, and we looked at a lot, but they can go on for hundreds of pages. So we tried to get the key constructs or dimensions. And we looked at three big research studies. One was done by the Hanover Research Group, a review of K-12 literacy tools. We looked at a comprehensive study of applications done by Carolina University. And then there's a product or a very lengthy tool, the Instructional Materials Evaluation Tool, developed by the Council of Grade City Schools, that we use to identify dimensions that would apply to this product. So it wasn't as if we sort of made them up. This is what's out there in the research.
And the great city schools are school districts from all over the country.
Correct.
And we have some in the state of Florida, such as Miami-Dade.
Correct. So the setup of the rubric, and we could bring up the rubric now, James, if you want, is we have these dimensions, which I'll go over. Then we talked about, well, how are we going to evaluate? What's the methodology? The goal? What would we consider? And of course, we can discuss these further, but what would be successful? And then whether we would meet it or not? Yes, no, or partially? So the first six dimensions are what you have in the blue up here and you have in hard copy. The first one is about individualized instruction, the online instructional piece. How were students using this product? And when you look at these dimensions, we have six of them, these are non-negotiable. You know, it had to be aligned with Florida standards. It had to have sufficient rigor, and we use the web's depth of knowledge taxonomy. So we had to have a program that aligned with that, with a range of content. We had to have high-quality text of sufficient quantity and high-quality tasks, 1.3 and 1.4. And we added sufficient quantity because there's often times that we've bought tools where there's not enough in it. So it becomes repetitive. And this tool did, was successful in all of these. And if you look at the methodology and goals set here, this was done prior to purchase. So we had to have expert review on all of these. Then we wanted to look at connection to future learning. That's one of our goals in Sarasota County, is this articulated instruction going across the grade levels and up. So we have stretched goals and also that it's aligned to ultimately college and career. And then that was personalized, individualized instruction. This is a tool that we use in addition to our general instruction. It's integrated, it's part of it, but it had to be personalized for the child. If we go to dimension two, this is something that is, was very carefully evaluated and thought about, and that is that we wanted an adaptive assessment. There's a lot of research, there's a lot of assessment tools out there, they're not adaptive. It's the way my age and a lot of us here, we took assessments, meaning that there was a finite number of grade-level questions, and that's what you had. But the next generation of tests that we always should consider is adaptive tests. It adapts to the needs of the child. So if a child's performing higher, it goes higher. If the child's performing lower, it lowers, scales it down a bit so that we can accurately kind of diagnose the child's deficiencies and strengths. So when we talk about dimension two, we're trying to get at that. We're also trying to get at whether the question types were of a sufficient number, quantity, and quality. That is probably, in my world, Natalie's world, one of the biggest challenges. It's very hard to find a test that has enough items, that is aligned to our standards, that are high-quality items and not just measuring the lower-level skills, and has enough tasks at the range that we want them to look at. And also that the items were aligned to the FSA. We don't want them to see all different kinds of items that they're not going to be tested on, on our standardized assessment. Quality of the resources, this is the teacher-led instruction, dimension three. And dimension four talk about what the teacher's resources are. Do we have enough in the toolkit that the teacher can use? Do we have key reports that then are linked, right to teacher resources, that are linked to lesson plans? And this was one of the only tools, if not the only tool, that had that big piece. Test attributes, this was something, again, Natalie and I studied at length, and that's from the white papers that iReady produced. Is this a test that's valid, reliable, culturally sensitive? Those are minimum requirements for any assessment. And you look at the vendors stuff, but we also researched, New York has implemented iReady. We looked at the way they evaluated their use of the product and what they felt about it. Then technology integration. Well, since it's a technology tool, if it doesn't work technically in the district, that's a non-negotiable. And all of these are non-negotiable. But that one, if we can't roll it out, if it doesn't integrate with our existing technology, and if we don't have the Internet structure, and we can take the load on our systems, then it was no point buying the tool. And all of that was determined to be satisfactory. So that's the first big pre-implementation piece. Did you have anything to add, Natalie? Any questions on that piece? Yes?
Yeah, so clearly, when we go to evaluate this at the end, we're not going to be giving that much weight to that, to the pre-implementation piece, because...
Well, we were successful beyond, I mean, and it's, anytime we would go to a bid process, it's the same type of thing we're looking at. So you don't buy it.
Right, so this is more, you include this because you're going to create a template to be able to use this template when you go to evaluate other products.
Correct. So that's why, if a product doesn't go to bid, if it's a sole source, at minimum, we have to look at attributes like this.
Good, thank you.
And others that are particular for that product, obviously. So the second part, and the second is the next seven, six dimensions, from seven to 12. And again, these are non-negotiable. If these don't work, we really shouldn't be, we shouldn't have bought the product. But if they also, on an annual basis, we want to determine if things are working. So, or semi-annual, whatever the cycle would be. So technical attributes. Does the program work with our district's network? And then the second one is, how do we measure this type of stuff? Well, if it's working, I have to work with the IT staff. We would all have to, to determine that this is all up and functional. And we're looking at help tickets, so we're having problems with the product. Then frequency, technology integration. Is there any downtime? I mean, we've had products, we bought where it's not our fault, but that the vendor is having problems and the product's down. So we would really have a very high, we should never have more than 2% of downtime. Data integration, this is behind-the-scenes stuff. And this, we've had products I can think of before where it has enormous amount of work behind the scenes, loading rosters, making sure the tests are going to the right kids, making sure the reports can be pulled down correctly. Program design has to do with, is it easy to read? Are the graphics easy? And we've developed tests here and put graphics in, and you load the graphics and they don't come out right. So when you're buying something like this, that should all work. Videos should be linked and all of that. So how we would measure that last one, we'd be talking to teachers, surveying teachers. There shouldn't be a problem with that. Dimension eight, test attributes. Again, this gets to our, looking at the specs of the test. So does it correlate with the FSA? And our cutoff that we set was .7. It should have a .7 or greater correlation with the FSA. If it gets way up there, like .9, we don't need another test, right? They're measuring the same exact thing. But this is a test that's used for a number of purposes, but we would correlate the AP pieces, AP2, AP3, with how they scored on the FSA. Does the diagnostic assessment accurately predict how we do on the FSA? And our criteria there was it has to be between five percentage points. And so far, when we look back, it's within that. Implementation, the administrator and teacher experience, how do they feel about the assessments after they have enough time using it? So we set the teacher's goal at the first one, their confidence with the product. We think that after two years of using the product, 80% of them should report they're completely confident. Maybe the first year, because of, you know, the rollout and all of that, at least 50% are confident. Teacher use, so the teacher's using it. We have usage reports. We'll know if they're, and we think that 80% of the respondents should report looking at it, using the assessment to inform instruction. Principal perception, how do they feel? Is it being implemented with fidelity at their schools? And then collective efficacy is something that we're really looking at instructionally. We know that teamwork and teachers collaborating together as a team move student achievement. So we're hoping that principals will report that teachers are using iReady collectively and using it to drive instruction. and using it to drive instruction. Dimension 10, we're talking about student use. How do the students feel about the product? What's their efficacy? And we think after two years, 80% of the teachers will report that they are confident using the product. There's no problem, even little ones. Student interest, do they positively engage with it? This will have to look at teachers' perceptions, but then also maybe some student focus groups, talking to kids about how they feel about using it. Student use, how frequently are students using it? We know that if the product isn't used, we can't very well say that it's improving instruction. So if that's one thing, we think that 80% of the students should be, on average, at least, using it for 60 minutes a week, minimum. Student growth and student performance are 10.4 and 10.5, and we're thinking that a higher percentage of students who use the program with fidelity should be demonstrating growth. And that the average, and 10.5 is a very important one, and that is that the average percentage of students performing below grade level should be decreasing from AP1 to AP3. We see evidence of that, and we have it up on the dashboard to follow. It's that we should be moving that trajectory because that's the piece, that if kids are below level and we hit that trajectory is where, and we change the trajectory of their learning through this product, is where we're going to see the lowest quartile move. Question 11, formative assessment. This product is used as a formative assessment and a diagnostic assessment. To be a good formative tool, it has to have teacher feedback and student feedback. Teachers and, not only teachers getting the feedback on how the students are doing, succeeding or being challenged, but then also are the students able to, over time, be involved, engaged with their own learning and performance? They really understand where they're going, and they're setting their own targets. And we have number 12, oh, an error evaluation, I'm sorry, 11.3. Does it provide specific feedback on student errors? That's important for the teacher. As they're going through the learning progressions, at what point is this, are the students not doing well so they can intervene? And it does have an error analysis report. And then dimension 12 is the cost and implementation. And what we tried to do here is get this from a very holistic piece. First is about professional development. We expect 100% of the teachers using the product to have been trained, and the vendor to help us with that training. Did I Ready professional development meet or exceed our expectations in that area? And then per student cost, how much does the product cost per kid? Is the cost of technicals, the number 12.4 and 12.5 is about the district support of the product. Technically, we're paying people, of course, to make sure we're doing rosters, keep the product going. That's a big piece of it. And then in the RAO office, we do a lot of analytics with the product. We use the product for teacher evaluation, for example. So we work, and we have been working with their psychometric team on, is this a useful tool for that? How should we be using it for that? So that kind of support. And then the research team works with the data quite a bit. 12.6, when you're looking at any product, what else can you do with the results? We have diagnosis, we have formative assessment, we have interim assessment. But with this tool, can we substitute some other testing? I mean, so we can save time that way. So examples I listed here were the SAT 10 for grade three, the Iowa and the Orleans Hannah, which were two tools that we used in mathematics at middle school that we can now use the I Ready for. And then the last piece is, can we use I Ready scores for third-grade promotion? That was very important, and the answer is you can. So that eliminates that, right after the FSA, third graders were, in the past, all of them, or those that we were very concerned about, took the SAT 10. And so we can eliminate that administration there. We use the SAT 10 in the summer after a reading camp, but that's a much smaller group of students, and that's an expensive test. So we save money there. So that's it in a nutshell. That was fast, I guess, but if there are questions and clarifications, yes?
Eric.
Thank you very much for doing this. I did not expect it to be so robust, but I know Denise, Dr. Denise, that you worked very hard on this, and so I just want to say thank you. My first question is, because it's so robust, are we going to be able to get all the data to score out every one of these items?
I'll tell you...
Some of these are very subjective, some of them are objective.
When Natalie kept asking me to ask things, I was getting a little scared because it had to be robust, as you say, or holistic. But yeah, we'll be able to, but it will take some work in my office.
It seems like it's going to take a lot of work for that. And my other question is, is, I mean, you know, when it comes down to evaluation, obviously we're going to, I mean, just me personally, I'm going to weight certain things differently than other things. Like, does it work with our network? I probably won't give that as much weight as how much a predictive score does it have. So I would give, you know, the predictive score greater weight than does it work with our network? Because if it doesn't work with our network, why do we even still have it? So when I'm evaluating to renew it, I'm going to be given different weights. Do you envision you giving us any type of guidance in that weighting? Or would that be, I'm the new school board member, so I'm just curious. Was that left open to the, each individual school board member of what things that they think are more important than others?
And as we mentioned, on the pre-valuation or the pre-implementation of the program, some of those were already conducted. And you're right, if it didn't align to our standards, we don't care how psychometrically sound the assessment is, we're done. So we do move along the line. And it is similar to the charter application review that you're familiar with.
That's fair.
We have the criteria. We don't assign numbers to it, but obviously, if the school doesn't have a reading plan, the rest, it's, they're done, the big ticket items. So we go through that process, and it is somewhat holistic. We're not assigning number values. For the annual and, for the annual evaluation pieces, we could come back to you with some ideas of weights. And again, if it's not being used, even though that might, is not really an essential objective, but then we can't really evaluate the impact.
But for the charter view application, there's actually a list of things that are required in statute, and we have a policy that we're going to be talking shortly, that has those lists. We, I mean, you...
Correct. And these are, this is our list. So again, with the pre-implementation, if it didn't meet 1.1 with the alignment of standards, then we're not going to go any further. And we go down the line. Okay, it's aligned to the standards, the assessments are valid, the teacher toolkit seems to also be valid and user-friendly. We might get to the technology piece. If we can't pull it off, then we're done with that product.
And you've been very, very helpful with me for my first year. So hopefully, I'll be able to lean on you when we go to evaluate the I Ready again.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And as we were saying, now, this is primarily a tool for the teachers. And it's important to know that it's predicting FSA, not so much for the sake of predicting it, but knowing that we're on the right path. If we get to the end and the students are not where we thought they were, they were going to be on the FSA, then obviously, something's not happening in between those two points. And a lot of it is, it's formative. We're continuously looking at the data to modify the program or say, gosh, teachers, remember the principal survey? Principals felt that teachers still were kind of not feeling 100% confident in it. Well, that drives our decisions about professional development. We find that we're getting way too many tickets from the help desk. Well, then something has to be, we have to troubleshoot in that regard. So it's continuously evolving.
I just want to point out to Dr. Bowden that Dr. Boka and her division, especially Dr. Denise and people, have been so helpful to me in my first year and putting up with me, which Lord knows is not an easy thing. But she's, she's been very patient, and whether it's talking about charter schools, our data, they've been, you know, school choice with Ms. Ward, they have never not been extremely helpful and patient. You know, I'm sure they've been aggravated at times, but they have been nothing but helpful to me, and so I just want to say thank you.
It's very challenging and stimulating, the questions that you pose to us, Mr. Robinson.
It's like hot and cold in the same.
Yes.
Can I follow up on an earlier question that he asked, just as far as expectations of when this rubric would be fully populated? And put that in the context of when a decision has to be made on extending or renewing the contract?
I believe the contract is up this year. Is that true for elementary schools next year?
Middle school's up this year, elementary...
I'm sorry, I had it reversed. Okay, so yeah, we're, so we're in year three of the elementary program, but we are at the conclusion of the middle school because we only invested for a two-year program just to see how it was going to be, the impact at the middle school level. So I guess we have to come back to you to answer your question with the annual piece completed, at least for the middle school, since we do have to make a decision this year.
So do you anticipate separating out the 17, 18 by elementary and middle school so they can be judged separately? Or are you going to aggregate those two?
I'm thinking if we have to make a decision about continuing with the program, we would have to separate out the middle school. I don't know, that's something to consider. I maybe spoke out of turn. Because you might have different issues. When we look at the data, we are looking at elementary versus secondary. Student interest maybe was different at the middle school level. Is it because they weren't using the program correctly? At the elementary level, they had a head start. So it's, we do have to really look at the data differently, I would think.
So back to Eric's question, is, there are a lot of data elements. Do you anticipate that by that decision point, that we'll have all of those data elements available to us?
Yes.
Certainly the...
I'm giving you an out. You said yes.
I'm qualifying.
He just wrote it down, date, time, and yes.
I'm qualifying that statement. It works, but Natalie's very generous in the yes.
We will be able, we will be able to have a lot of this completed for the middle school, and we do have to. We have to decide if we want to continue with I Ready for the, you know, next few years, so.
There's one piece that we also have to do that's a little bit further than, you know, I have general statements here, but the analysis on who's benefiting in terms of kids, you know? So there are certain, we talked a lot about that and those growth targets, and it looks like one, like everybody's going to do X, Y, or Z. But I think we only have to break down, what was the, how were they using it at the school? And elementary and middle is a little bit different, and even school is a little bit different for different groups of kids. So there's, like, if they were using it and their target was on lower-achieving children, then we should be seeing the trajectory shift there. So if we were using it for higher-level kids, we should see the shift there. So I'm going to have to do some breakdown, this is why I'm holding Natalie's hand, about, you know, where, where do we see the student groups growing? And then where's the, are they implementing with fidelity? All of those things will tie into our piece at the end.
And I have a question about, about learning disabilities. What about learning disabilities such as dyslexia? Do we have any...
We would have to separate the analysis out by that as well, then, for ESC students. Now, we do do that on the dashboard.
Right.
So we have ESCs, not particularly students with dyslexia, but ESC non-gifted students. We have separate analysis for those. So we'll have to, again, so when we look at it, it's going to be, I can see some partials here. Like, yes, we see movement here, and we don't see it here. And that would be, so it becomes our decision-making, and all that more complex.
I would really be interested in those in particular. Caroline?
I'm just curious as to what our role is in this. Because you all are doing the analysis, you all are telling us whether the programs are working or not. And if they're not, I'm sure that you will change them. So I don't understand what it is that we are being asked to do.
So this is a major expenditure. We've made a huge investment. And so I think we have an accountability, not just back to the board, but to the public to say, is the investment paying off? Is it doing what we anticipated for it to do? Ultimately, it will boil down to a yes-no decision on contract renewal. That will be accompanied by a recommendation that if I choose to put forth a renewal, then I will have to justify that decision. So all of this is really a staff process that leads to a recommendation that comes back to the board that says, I, as superintendent, am recommending that we continue the contract or that we end the contract. But it allows you, as a board member, to do more than just judge that decision at face value, but to understand the thought process. I would anticipate that at the time that we made a decision, that if the answer was to continue, that it would come with an action plan of things that we would do differently in response to this, training and different things, moving in for the next phase. But it's kind of a reveal into how am I, with the use of staff, going to make a recommendation to you as a board to renew or not renew? And then ultimately, back to Eric's question of, I then have to decide, am I going to vote yes or no on the superintendent's recommendation? You may put great weight in the recommendation, or you may put great weight in individual line items that are of particular importance to you. But it does give you a basis for making decisions. It's about giving you information. You may say, this is too much information or not enough information, or I'm going to focus on these line items. And I think that's why we didn't put weight, because I think individually, board members will have different perspectives and put different weight on different issues. But ultimately, there is, there will be a recommendation coming from staff.
I think I look at things a little differently. That's the problem. Because I hire you to do this. And yes, I want to know what the results are, but I don't want to micromanage anything. Your valuation and your funding, your salary depends upon whether you make the correct recommendations. And that's where I'm coming from. I guess here, I'm a different person. But I don't, excuse me, I don't have to know every little itty-bitty thing. It's not necessary for me. So that's where I get hung up, because it's so much in the minutia and so much more like micromanaging. I've been accused of micromanaging. I have never micromanaged, and I am positive of that now. So I, I just, I have a question. That's, that's it. I want you to tell me if it's working, because you are the person we hired to do this. We're not educators, you are.
Yep.
I get that, and I understand where you're coming from, and I sometimes feel that way, too. We, we do not want to micromanage, nor do we want to overwhelm our staff. And sometimes I feel like with the amount of information we have in this today workshop, I have, I have great concern about that. Charlie Brown?
When you talk about when we're putting weights on things, when I look at, a lot of the discussion has been around the dimension eight. You know, does this line up with the FSA? And can we predict what the FSA scores are?